Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the same daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay Candy, roll call please.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Eric?
Yes. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum, please? Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Eric?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna have a short executive session here right away. This come up a little later in the day today. We'll try to make it as quick as we can so we don't hold you guys up. We're going to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes, and to consider the appointment of public employees or officials. Do I have a motion, please? Do we have a second? I'll second. Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Eric?
Yes. Okay. Thanks for your patience. What we wanna do now before we move on? Oh, we do. We gotta come out of executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Eric?
Yes.
Five fifty nine.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we decide to make, have a motion in a second on special item number one here, we wanna open the floor for some discussion. The board has questions. I know you guys are here again. I apologize, but I, I hope you see that, how serious we're taking it, that, you know, we're trying to really do what's right for the, the district.
We truly appreciate you being here.
Yeah, we do. It's...
One thing, one thing Darren did want us to do upfront is if you can just say where you're from and your role like that.
I'm sorry, is Tom, is Tom back on? Tom, can you hear us? I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want, I noticed Tom wasn't on there.
He was on there, but so was Michael and Dan. I don't know.
Michael and Dan, I'd had to leave because I know Dan's on there.
Yeah, I'm on there as well. I'd like to be there in person. I had some other commitments to...
We understand Tom's there. You can hear us, Tom?
That's probably Dan.
I can pretty well.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm on the screen just to see everybody and on my phone for the audio.
Okay. Do you want it facing you guys or them, or?
Just kinda set it in the middle, maybe more in the center. That's good, yeah. Can everybody see it somewhat? Thank you. Okay.
Can you start?
I can start. Ian Rogers, Executive Director of Self-Construction.
Stacy Thomas, Project Manager for the High Facilities Construction Commission.
Patrick King, I'm with Stiefel, which was the underwriter of the self, the self participation this June, July?
July.
July, yes, July nineteen, or no, June sixty of last year to fund the school.
All right, with that being said.
I guess, where do you wanna start?
Well...
Would you like the best to do is to, to make this a question and answer thing, questions for you guys, and we'll do the best we can answer. Understand that, you know, this is uncharted waters, Patrick's words, for the OFCC. I've been there twenty-one years almost, project manager the entire time, and I've never had a project in a situation where you guys are that you're considering, you know, not moving forward, moving forward, whatever. So, there's gonna be a lot of technical questions, that I can give you my best estimate of what the final answer or what the answer's gonna be, or how I feel that it's probably gonna go. So, but, you know, I can't give you definitive answers because there's things that haven't been done and haven't had to been answered, if that makes sense.
Yes, I, I do want Patrick to start kinda from the beginning because I think there's a lot of questions about the revenue from the power plant and if it's still locked in, what happens if we don't move forward?
What happens if we don't move forward?
So, he was gonna kinda start at the beginning and explain, which I think you guys need that initially.
Sure, yes, there are without question, construction implications. There are also financial implications, or implications around the financing perhaps is what I'm saying. So, the district in two, going sort of back in two thousand nineteen, entered into an agreement with OFCC to go forward when the OFCC funding was available at a percentage of fifty-one percent local, forty-nine percent state. And the, we were really motivated at that time because the percentage was going to change to a much high, I think we're like sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent?
I think it's sixty-two or sixty.
Sixty, yeah, sixty-four thirty-six.
So, the point was that the, the project that was fifty-fifty essentially was going to skew very much to being
sixty-four.
Response, yeah, more than that, the responsibility of the taxpayers of Rolling Hills. So, we went through a couple of iterations of a what we called a bridge loan, which really just an agreement with a bank to have the financing on hand. And then last summer, ultimately sold twenty-eight and a half million of certificates of participation, which effectively securitized or took that revenue stream from the power plant and pulled that forward so that the district had the money to sign a project agreement and go forward with the OFCC. So, the district is getting forty-two plus million dollars over the next, well, until twenty fifty-one, so the next twenty-nine years. And we took that one point four plus million dollars a year and set that as the cap on the payments on an annual basis and were able to get twenty-eight and a half million dollars in proceeds. Plus, a premium amount which has been used to pay interest until the full collections or the full distribution, the payment in lieu of tax from the power plant shows up. This was a model that we had used in, in some different places, including Carrollton Schools up the road, and almost identical situation, so it's a path that we had been down. So, that's sort of the history. I, I think the next part of this is, okay, let's say that this board decides that this is no longer the road you wanna go down. What are the implications? What happens? And so what would happen is that we would do what's called a defeasance, which is a financial term where you eliminate an outstanding obligation or debt. So, we would take the proceeds that are in the bank, and, and my understanding is there's been about a million dollars, a million and a half spent so far.
I've spent nine hundred thousand dollars between local and state.
Okay, okay. So, you, you, we would take the proceeds, put that into an escrow account, and you, you would take the amount of money that's in the construction fund and available, plus an additional amount because you're, the, 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 the rate that you borrow at is not, is, is greater than the rate that you can receive in an escrow account, so if that makes sense. So, you borrowed it two point four two percent, but you might only get two percent in the escrow. So, I'm just using sort of illustration numbers here, but so, so there's that point four two percent that you would be underwater that would cost the district, we estimate it to be somewhere between, and, and I'm, I'm gonna be a little squishy on this because to Stacy's point, this is kind of always a hypothetical, but there, there's some questions, there were some premium amounts that we don't know if we can use to fund the escrow and, and some different pieces, so our estimate conservatively is about a million dollars in sunk costs to fund that escrow to a point where the twenty-eight and a half, twenty-eight and a half million dollars of certificates of participation are off of your books. So, you would take effectively twenty-eight and a half million dollars plus another million, so twenty-nine and a half, put that in an escrow account, and by jumping through hoops and over a period of time, you know, three, four weeks, we would have a process in place where those COPs certificates of particip- participation would go away, and your bond counsel would ultimately sign a letter that says they are no longer obligations of the district.
So, your million dollars is on top of everything?
Yes, that's what, that's, that's, I cannot, yeah, I wanna make a hundred percent sure that everyone understands that, that that is a, effectively a penalty of what, of, of this decision.
Exactly, yes.
Now, the, the, the good news is, I suppose, is that short-term interest rates have come up, and interest rates, as many of you know, have come up significantly over the past six months really. And so, that inefficiency of plus or minus a million dollars is much less today than it would have been twelve months ago, eight months ago. So, it may have been three million dollars in the past, so that is, is, is a benefit, I suppose, if that's worth stating, but, you know, the other, I mean, I think some context or some things I'd like to point out, that million four a year, based on two point four two percent, which was the market rate on June sixteenth of last year, raised twenty-eight and a half million dollars for this project. Based on where interest rates have gone, you're at about twenty-two and a half million dollars if you did the same revenue stream. So, I think something, and I'm trying to, you know, give you things to think about and react to. This isn't an instance where, you know, let's just put this back, send it back, and then we'll reassess the project income back and, and do the same thing or have the same amount. You, the district was in a very fortunate position in the summer of twenty twenty-one to be able to generate as much money as they could from that payment, and so it was beneficial. So, you will not be able to...
Replicate it.
Yeah, within, within that million four constraint, you will, you will only get to, I think it's, yeah, about twenty-two, three is the number.
Twenty-two, three compared to twenty-eight, six?
Twenty-five.
That's if we were, if we would go through the process again now.
Yes, right.
That's only, yeah, so if we, we would decide, you know...
We don't like this, we don't, we don't wanna do this, we're gonna put it back and reassess and come back.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be a lot less money for our, less bang for our bucks, so to speak.
Precisely.
I hope you understand, Patrick, you know, none of us could foresee what's happened with the economy and the, you know, that's the, the biggest concern of the board education was, you know, we didn't foresee this, you, you guys didn't.
Oh, nobody could.
We just wanna make sure the decision we make tonight's the best for the district, so we appreciate, you know.
Any questions about anything that I just talked about, any context that would be helpful, anything that, you're, I mean...
Just, just, if we would get out now, it's gonna cost us a little over a million dollars.
Yeah.
On your part, plus the two million that we're already in.
And let me just say, that is, I, I am not talking about any contracts related to architects or construction.
Right.
I'm talking...
We've got that, we, we just wanted to know your parts, your part, because everybody has a part.
Exactly, yes, no, no, I, I can only talk to the straight financial implications of the transaction itself.
No, there was a nine-year mention.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Right.
Do you wanna discuss with Hall, how that works?
When, when municipal securities are offered in the market, it is a little bit different than a home loan, which is sort of the easy comparison. You build a house, you go get a loan, you build a school, you go get a loan effectively. And, and one of the key differences is that investors of municipal bonds like to be protected from having their bonds be refinanced. So, a typical mechanism in municipal bond financing is what is called a call provision set at ten years. So, basically, that is the date that the district, without penalty, without having to do anything out of the ordinary, can come back and refinance, or in a lot of cases, pay off their bonds. If there was a, there's, there's instances in different parts of the state where pipelines are going through and they expect to get a lot of money, and they're going to sit on that money, come to their call date and write a check to pay off their outstanding bond. So, sort of the window opens for this district in twenty twenty-one, and I'm looking right here, September first of twenty twenty-one, I believe.
Twenty thirty-one.
Thirty.
Twenty thirty-one.
We already had twenty.
Yeah, 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 I wish it was twenty twenty-one, actually, it's March first, twenty thirty-one, is that, is when that window opens to refinance. So, what we would do is because the investors have that protection, we would take the proceeds that, that are still sitting in the accounts, plus whatever that, we'll say a million dollars is, put that in an escrow account until twenty thirty-one. So, that escrow account is gonna earn, again, two percent, but the obligation to the bondholders is gonna be two point four two percent, and the district needs to effectively write a check to bridge that gap. So, there is a nine-year period where this is inefficiency.
Or financially, we'd be tied up no matter what we decide for till twenty thirty-one.
Yes.
And...
Say that again, I'm not sure.
We're separating, that's, that's in the escrow account. There still isn't the escrow.
Yeah, you're going to have the escrow, but, but there will be, for purposes of your financial statements and purposes of the district, it will be what we call legally defeasted. You will, there will no longer be legal obligations of the school district. They will be funded by the amount of money that's in that escrow account.
Okay. And in your experience...
No, you do not have to, it is off of your books, it will not show up. It will be a, probably a footnote in your financial statements, but otherwise...
And your experiences, you've never seen, this has never happened.
The only, I mean, the, correct, I mean, the short answer is yes, that has not happened.
But you can understand our seriousness of this because of the situation with the economy.
Patrick, I've got a, a question that might be silly.
No, 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 no.
Why can't we keep our twenty-eight million? And, you know, that, that's, it's like a loan.
Well, okay, so, that is a good question.
That is what I don't get. We, we gave forty-two million over the thirty years. You gave us the twenty-eight million. Why do you take it back?
Well, because you borrowed it tax exempt. So, when you borrow tax exempt, the, like, one thing that the federal government is, is aligned regardless of political party or anything, is that they all dislike tax exempt bonds because they cannot collect taxes on tax exempt bonds. So, when a entity that has tax favored status, like Rolling Hills, like any school district in Ohio, you have the opportunity to sell tax exempt bonds. And by doing that, you are obligated to do certain things, and there are spend down requirements. Because what the federal government...
So, so you wouldn't necessarily have to take it back if we spent it on the right stuff?
No, well, no, if, had you sold taxable bonds, which would have been much more expensive last year, you would have not been subject to any of this. You could have sat on the money, earned interest on it, and done whatever you wanted theoretically, and, I mean, that's sort of a simplistic answer because you, you passed a resolution that obligated you to borrow the money for a certain purpose. So, that would have to be explored, and I'm not a lawyer, but we gotta get into that. But in terms of sitting on the money, the, the district has responsibilities to spend a certain amount of money in...
Is that the arbitrage?
Yeah, it, it, basically, the easy test is eighty-five percent in three years. And so, there's other, there's also a five-year test that's basically eighty-five percent in five years, and you sort of, has different gateposts along the way.
And the reason I ask that is, is if that money was ours and, and we found out we couldn't improve, build the brand-new version, then we could take that money that he's talking about and improve all of our other schools within that timeframe. I know that's a bad option, but that's still, that's what I'm...
I'm not sure that's entirely possible because the money was borrowed for a certain purpose, and that was to do the project with the Facilities Commission and build a K-12 and renovated middle school and everything that was associated with that. So, it was, you can't just, you know, investors are...
Well, I just, I wanted to know.
Right, so there's really two reasons.
They're wanting to secure their investment, and if we don't spend it the right way,
Right.
they don't have a way to secure their investment.
Right, and who's to say you're not gonna go build a twenty-eight and a half million dollar football stadium and...
Exactly.
Who knows, right, or an arena or something, and they would never have otherwise invested in.
Our property is what's securing the bonds, and therefore, if we improve the property, we build a new school. Everybody's happy because they're guaranteed.
And there's, there's a, investors are very mindful of what they call essentiality. So, it's, it's, they want the proceeds, what they invest in, to go toward school buildings, not toward other things, and so that's why we put these restrictions in on the front end so that investors know what they are purchasing.
And we had to present them, what was the document, over a hundred pages? That, yes, that had to be presented to investors before they went up. They had everything about our project.
And, and Patrick was clear on this, all this in the past, it's just, we weren't up against the, the situation around what the cost of increase of everything, so...
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the good news here is that rates have gone up, so you are in a very favorable position with the, what you have outstanding, and, and, and that is certainly a, a good place to be. At the same time, as rates have gone up, you've been able to earn more money in your construction funds. So, there is a bit of a benefit there. If, if we were at the rates last July when the district got wired the money, you'd be earning virtually nothing. So, there is a little bit of a, you know, it's kind of a good...
Do you have that number, Candy, will we?
We haven't earned a ton yet, I don't know.
The stadium, like, was at March thirty-first, it was eleven thousand.
I think it was eleven thousand. But Red Tree, the last time I talked to them, as money, I think they had a couple, a month or two, then they were gonna be able to reinvest it. And they asked me how soon I would need a big chunk of it, and they're gonna keep reinvesting as interest rates go up, so it should start earning more monthly.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it's very helpful, yeah.
Does that help any of you guys?
Thank you very much.
That, that lets us know where we're, we stand. We're, we're three million in, a million with you, two million on ourselves.
And I do, I, I wanna just qualify everything I say with, that is a given time. You know, we deal with markets, and markets, as we all know, are changing to the, to the good and to the bad, so...
Next week, your million dollars could be more or less.
Exactly right. So, I don't, what I, what I would hate to have happen is to go down this road and...
Be a drastic change.
Yeah, and, and, you know, be up here and have you say, you know...
Yo, you said what I...
Yeah. Well, I think there's also, you know, like we're saying with the three million dollars we, we've got, there's also gonna be some architectural costs, right?
Uh, most of that's...
If we go forward, that was, that was my biggest question for you is, how much? So, so we're three million in now, and I, and I don't wanna misspeak.
No.
To get to the next estimate, when we get the next estimate, how much deeper do we have to go in? That's, that's our biggest concern.
So, I, I looked at the architect's costs for all the way through GMP.
Stacy, I, I, yeah, I have it in front of me as well. Just to get to the DD phase is, is what he's asking. And to get to the DD phase, we would be another roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And plus, we're, there's about another hundred thousand dollars just in miscellaneous items here with the traffic study, geotechnical investigation, and things that have already been done, so... So, we're looking at, you know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Andy, you're at eighty-some thousand, right? You're much, you're much lower.
Yeah, so our total contract, a hundred and thirty-some thousand, we build that in thirds, so schematic design, design development, and GMP. So, just divide it by three, and that's what we do.
Okay.
It'll be the same bill you got before, Candy.
The, the last bill, I got forty-six.
That's what Matt, we, we can get to the next estimate for a hundred million dollars. And that, and that's stuff that we didn't know before we got in here.
Uh, the meeting we had, the last meeting we had Thursday, we were, as a board, we weren't sure that if we voted on these items, we were locked in indefinitely.
Completely locked.
Yeah, we, we were under a, a, a opinion that we were locked in indefinitely. So, tonight was such an important, it's all important, but we were, we were under the gun, so...
So, yeah, just one thing I wanted to make clear, just from having obviously been through the delivery model a lot, that's the beauty of CMR, is schematic design, you get an estimate, design development, the designs further along, you get another estimate. That's another round of us looking at the documents, but it's more importantly nowadays, it's another round of us hammering the economy on what's gonna happen, what we think's gonna happen, and obviously, we include those costs in our estimate to try and predict the best we can, and it's hard right now. But you're getting that again in the fall. Then, we're gonna get GMP documents, and we're gonna put together, we're gonna go out and get bids.
Will you explain what GMP is?
So, our guaranteed maximum price.
Construction documents.
So, we get, after design development's done, we go through that phase, produce another estimate, so that will be in October of next year.
And they'll sign off on that estimate.
We get another estimate of this year. We do that. Then, we move forward. Obviously, you guys know financially what that would mean, we would build for forty-some thousand, Fanning would build for their portion. And then in February and March of next year, we're getting hundred percent construction documents. That's us getting those documents and actually putting it out to bid. So, everything that we're doing is hypothetical up until that point. Now, we're getting, it's, it's real now. We're getting real numbers from the subcontractors that are pre-qualified that'll bid to us for this project. We're gonna gather all that. It's one GMP, it's one guaranteed max price, it's the cost of, of doing the addition and the renovation, all the site work, everything.
That'll be in March, roughly.
February, March.
We're, so we're gonna have hard bids. To us, we're gonna present that number. Until you sign that GMP,
we're just on the hook for what we've occurred thus far.
Right, we wanted to know how much deeper we could get, we had to go to get to that point.
So, at that point, you're gonna be another forty-six thousand dollars. You're gonna be eighty-some thousand.
And then...
I don't know what...
Six, seven hundred thousand.
So, no, that, he only gave you his cost through DD.
There's gonna be more to it.
So, to go through the CD phase, I took all of their basic services up through GMP, would be another one point four million dollars plus the additional services, some of those that he talked about was a hundred and thirty thousand, so one point five, one point six million dollars.
But that includes, that includes a seven thirty he already told us.
Yes, that includes, it doesn't include, yes, what you already paid them, that...
Which is part of the nine hundred I already told the board that was on the hook for.
So, what you've already paid to get to GMP, I'm estimating a one point five million dollars for the architect.
So, a, as you know, that, that's...
And Stacy, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
That's, that's...
Stacy, I'm just saying, I...
Two million from us, one million with the bond, and then now another two million, just to get to where we get an actual estimate. And that's what we...
We won't know what the, what the project...
So, we're five million in, we wanted to know, you know, that's the point we needed to get to.
Okay, then, do you want to kinda explain your process because with schematic design, you guys, because of what has happened with other projects, you put a certain percentage in, then we have a contingency for design development, but it was like, what, one point two million dollars?
See, that was just for the, the addition, it's actually two point three.
Oh, and, okay, that was just addition? So, we had a contingency, okay, of two point three.
So, just to be clear on what that's, what that does, is the, we're at schematic design, we met with Fanning, we, we do a very good job, they do a good job.
Does everybody understand what schematic design is, what design development? You know, schematic design is just boxes and putting things in places, and then design development is they're starting to refine and actually do some mechanicals and stuff like that. Okay. And then design development is they're starting to refine and actually do some mechanicals and stuff like that. Okay.
So we're, we're meeting with Fanny to try and predict what's gonna happen later on. So we're trying to capture everything we can. That five percent that's put in there is for maybe some details that aren't there, that we can't see right now, to pick that up. But it can also be used to cover inflation. Now, keep in mind throughout the estimate, every bid package we have. We have inflation in there. I mean, I was looking at specifically plumbing. Right. We were talking about plumbing today. You know, we're thirteen dollars a square foot, you know, year, two years ago, ten dollars a square foot. So. Are we, can we predict the future? No. But are we doing, we're not just throwing a guard at it. We're meeting with subcontractor suppliers and everybody. Trying to predict, okay, when we bid this thing, what's it gonna look like? It's, it's hard to do, but we are certainly giving it everything we can, even now. Cause what we, we don't wanna do is have that spike at DD. And then another spike when we do the GMP, when we actually get the bids. We wanna try and hopefully go down if we can.
Yeah. What I think was important, what I've heard is the fact that March, April, somewhere in there, we're gonna know.
Yes.
Where we're gonna be on what it costs to build this building. I mean, that's been.
Yes.
And to me, that was very important because, you know, it's been, what, seven years thus far and we're still. Now, granted, I don't know that, that things are gonna be better then.
Yeah, but part of that fifty three million dollars, where I wanna make sure, like, what he's explaining, part of the fifty three million dollars. That Stacy has thrown out as this is the total cost of the project. It has that contingency already in it. Plus it has his inflation already in it.
Okay. Stacy, I got a question. So, you know, Candy's advised us, has, has advised us that. Right now, we're at four point some million dollar on our new share, according to current guest estimate. Is it, is it rough?
So what, what we did is we took their estimate. And I compared it to our original budget of the forty two million plus. You guys had, um, you had. One million, eight, oh twenty five for your auditorium, that was the required LFI. Then you had six point three million dollars for your, um, we called it the inflation between the cost set of twenty seventeen. And twenty twenty that you guys chose to do to make up that difference so that you didn't have to change your enrollment projections. You didn't have to go to the sixty four percent split and that kinda stuff. So you guys kinda made that up of the cost set. So that was six point three million. Then you have three hundred thousand dollars that was for, and for additional square footage that you guys were doing, that was over the master plan. Um, what I did is when I did the budget adjustment, you guys took out about nine hundred and some square footage of. An area. So when you did that, I was able to show that we were back within our square footage that was co-funded. I took that three hundred thousand dollars and I put it on top of that six point three to make that six point six. To show that my folks, that we added the cost set difference from the two twenty twenty cost set. When I went for my budget increase to get to us a twenty twenty one cost set, because that's how much our cost sets went up, okay, our budget. So I moved that three hundred thousand dollars to make it so that I, I took care of that issue. Your auditorium, of course, had to go from the twenty twenty to the twenty twenty one. And that's why it went up to, from one million, eight thousand dollars to one, one million, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, okay? So we took care of those. So they didn't make me increase that six point three more than six that I did that three hundred thousand. So that saves you some money there, okay? So you're not paying for additional square footage, cause I was able to move that money over and help that pot of money. So from there, the difference of the cost increase from twenty to twenty one that I could get you guys. Was eight point, almost eight point four million dollars. That is where the forty nine fifty one split comes. So that number went down, but your auditorium number went up, the two hundred and seventy five thousand. So we were really at eight point seven million. I took that, say, rounded three hundred thousand, moved over in that pot of money. So yes, you're coming up still with the same amount that Candy. But they're in just, I've shown them different pots of money to try to help.
The difference is still four point five.
Yeah, since you're coming out, it's where, where, what pot of money.
As far as the board's concerned and the state, you, they did kick in more money.
Yes, he kicked in a ton more money than I thought we were going to.
Okay.
But you, you have a cap too, right?
Okay, that's where, that's where we saved you and helped you guys a ton.
Yeah.
Normally, you guys would've had a cap because you chose to renovate the high school and do an addition rather than build a whole new building. Because had you built a whole new PK twelve, um, it would've only been six point six million dollars more. Than what our original budget was, okay? So you're at an eighty eight percent or eighty two percent. When you get over sixty seven percent, we say. Whoa, wait a minute. It's more cost effective to build a whole new PK twelve than to do this renovation addition. We will never put more in than that six, that would've got us to a whole new building. By you guys, them allowing us to go to the twenty twenty one cost set. They allowed us to go above that six point six million and I got to eight point four million dollars. So between that six point six and the eight point four, which is what, two point eight, one point eight, two point eight? One point eight million dollars, that would've been all yours. So on top of the four point five, you would've had another. One point eight. But they did us a favor by saying, okay, we're gonna go, we, we understand the inflation problem. We're not gonna hold it to that cap. And I can tell you, that's the first time I've ever seen it done. Okay? So that was huge for you guys. Cause they kicked in that we're paying, of that one point eight, you're only paying fifty one percent instead of forty nine percent. So it saved you one point eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. So it got that, that whole amount. So I was able to get the whole eight point four million dollars co-funded at the forty nine fifty one. Instead of just six point six co-funded, plus you picking in, picking in the one point eight at a hundred percent. So it saved you guys a lot of money. So.
You going in four point five was our best case scenario and we came out.
I, I honestly, I thought you guys were gonna be closer to the, if they did go to the six. I was thinking you were gonna be closer to the six million dollars. So, yeah, five point five. We, you're right, five point five, we've just taken that forty nine fifty one split. So it saved you guys a ton of money by doing that. So, I mean, the, the offer that's out there at the four point five, um, I call it four point. I don't know, because you're adding your two, two, two seventy five onto that. Um. It's unheard of.
It's a gift.
It's, yeah.
So you were very happy. Yeah, you're very happy then.
I was ecstatic. I told Candy, I said, I don't think I can get anymore, I blah blah. And I can tell you that, you know, behind the scenes. Rhonda and I was working, Rhonda helped us tremendously, um, cause they listen to her a lot, you know what I mean? And so she was able to reason with it. She took stuff home and she was running numbers to show them, hey, this is what we should be doing. This is, you know, so without Rhonda's help, I couldn't have gotten us there.
And I appreciate, she worked really hard on that. And we, as a core team, changed things on her a couple of times and she had to rerun all of her numbers. Like she did really work.
Yeah, I can show you my spreadsheets, I do. And, I mean, it, it's, you can't just change one number and change everything. You're changing, you know, a hundred numbers on this spreadsheet to get it, to get it right. Um, so. I mean, OFCC has really gone to bat. I mean, working with our chief of finance and working with our, our planning and. You know, we had to convince them that, you know, this is the fair way to do it, this is the right thing to do, you know, we gotta keep this project moving. It's not helping anybody if we don't do this, you know?
We, we think you've all done a wonderful job and, and we're just in a very awkward situation with the way everything's going right now.
I understand.
And we didn't wanna get to a point.
Well, and this, you know, this is, this is an open, or open session meeting. So, you know, the public, if they've got questions, they can watch this and hear your, your responses. And answers to our, our concerns too, because obviously that's who we work for and we wanna make sure they're informed. Unfortunately, you can't get everybody in and, and most people don't care till it comes time. But I think we're getting the good answers here tonight, I think. I think, uh, this was very educational and helpful.
And is there a time limit on this budget adjustment?
Well, that's the problem is we have other districts out there that are waiting in the wings for our money. Um, you know. Five years ago, we couldn't beg districts to move forward. Now, we've got. I can't, I don't even know how many projects we have out there waiting for us to fund them. Um, so we can't sit there and just put this forty two, well, now it's fifty, fifty one million dollars and just let it sit there. When we could be using, you know, forty nine percent of that for other projects. So, you know, we would, we would love to have an answer tonight. We can probably take a week or two. Um, I don't know. I don't know how the week or two is gonna help you guys. It's only gonna hinder the project. We're already four months behind. And I've learned from my day one at OFCC that time is money. So every week we're waiting, every two weeks we're waiting. We are costing the project money. Um, and. I can't tell you how long they're gonna keep this offer out there, because again, we honestly are waiting to decide and try and figure out. How many districts we can fund next in July. This is tomorrow's June and July, we have to make a decision. Are we funding six projects or are we funding eight projects, new projects? And twenty five million dollars can. Start another project. So I, I, and I'm not doing these as any type of threat or anything. I'm just trying to tell you guys facts that. Time is money and we've gotta keep moving. Um, I think, I want Andy and, is the architect?
Michael's there.
Michael's still here. I need for them to speak to you guys about what this is doing to the project. Their pencils are down and what it's meaning for the future of this project. So. As far as their staff. So Andy, I don't know if you wanna start?
Yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, obviously, you know, we're not, as you guys know, we're not some big corporation. I can't just take the people that were. Hopefully slotted for this project and move into another one. It's really not, we're not set up that way. We're not big enough to do that. We're not Turner and those guys. Um, so obviously, we would send it rather than later, because if people, you know, if we had slated for the construction phase, we could have, hopefully pursue something else and win it. I mean, personally, you know, winning's hard. I mean, winning these projects is, is, is not easy. Um, our competition is very, um, formidable. I mean, we, we take a lot of pride in, in winning and doing a good job. We're not a huge company. We, we wanna do a good job for you. So you tell other people and that's how we get additional work. That is, that is our model. That is a model that we're gonna stick with no matter what. So obviously, we, we have a vested interest in, in seeing this thing through and building you a school building that I think you deserve and the community deserves. Um, but ultimately, if you, you decided not to move forward, um, you know, we would wanna know sooner rather than later, just cause we would have people that. You know, were slated for the construction phase. We don't wanna lose, cause they're very good people.
Yeah. I can respect that. I mean, you know, it's.
I know, any business.
So at this point, Andy, you feel very comfortable with the project or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I know this is tough. I, I, I get where you guys are coming from.
Well, I'm glad to hear you talked about, um, what we got to build in, inflation.
We do, and we do. Um, it's, it's a challenge. It's, it's hard to predict. And, and the reason why I say, I just met, I've been doing nothing but meeting. Potential subs about this project and other projects that we have to try and understand what's going on. Nothing, talking to those people is how you get informed about what's going on. The biggest challenge we have is manufacturers aren't holding pricing. So they say today, here's the price, tomorrow may not be. That is, that's the hardest thing for us to predict. Labor force is, is easier because we know with rates, rates are gonna increase, we can capture that. When you don't know, when people with manufacturers are saying. It's today, but it could be this tomorrow and it could be back down here, here, there. That, that's where the challenge for us is. I hope that calms down. I would like the opportunity to try and tell you guys in the fall where that's at and then again in the spring. I just don't, I, I feel like, you know, we, we're a construction manager, we're an advisor to you, that is part of our job. And I wouldn't be advising you correctly if I didn't say that moving forward would be the right thing to do, I think. Because again, if you, if you decide at G, at, at GMP when we have bids, that you don't wanna do it, you have a design, it's done. You can, so you can put it on the shelf then and decide what to do later. Yes, you have to pay for that design and you have to pay our hundred and thirty some thousand dollars. But I just would hate to see if, what if it doesn't continue to go up? What if we can build it for you? That, I would just be, I wouldn't be doing my job without telling you that.
I appreciate that. I respect that.
One other question, Stacy. I kinda heard you say it earlier and just kinda reiterated for us, that, uh. It's, it appears that you say every other district is chomping at the bit for that money. So, is anyone else, there's no one else out there that, that isn't. Talking about, you know, potentially worried about, uh.
We, we have other projects that have requested budget adjustments because of the inflation and the market factor. And some have gotten, uh, a budget adjustments, like you guys have been offered with a notice of intent. Um, but. Yes, we have districts out there that are waiting in the wings.
Which is, which is hard for me to believe that anybody would wanna build right now. Uh, which I, I find very hard to believe that districts are out there waiting and chomping at the bit to build buildings. Right now with fuel doubled and tripled and, and, and material costs.
Well, it's kind of like.
We have, we have six issues that are gonna be on the November ballot that are OFCC and, and not OFCC. I, I, I agree with you, it sort of.
That's, that's crazy, because why would anybody with the steel prices wanna, wanna start building right now? Why wouldn't they wait it out?
Well, but you've gotta understand that they've gotta go through, they've gotta go through design. So design's gonna be another year and a half, look how long our design here has taken. So they're hoping that within a year and a half, the prices have calmed down. But their, design is gonna be done by then. So they're a even a year and a half out from you. So they, those districts, starting in July of two thousand twenty two. That say we would offer them funding or whatever, they're not gonna be ready to build for another year and a half. That's two thousand twenty four. Okay? So those are the things that they're looking at. Thinking of it this way, if you're gonna build a five hundred thousand dollar home and somebody's offering you. To pay two hundred thousand dollars of it, would you turn it down?
Probably not.
So if somebody's offering you.
And I would echo that as well.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's gonna build a fifty eighty dollar project and some, and, and the state's offering to pay twenty million of it. And you're gonna be in design now, so then you're hoping that through your design, prices come down and that twenty million dollars now is like thirty million dollars. So I, that's how I look at it. If some, I mean, if someone wants to pay two hundred thousand dollars with my five hundred thousand dollar home right now.
Michael, were you gonna say something?
No, I'm just echoing both what Andy and, and Stacy have said. I mean, from Fanny Howie's perspective. Um, you know, yes, we'd love a decision sooner or later. Our team has been kind of on hold for the last couple of months. And the longer that this drags out, the more that difficult it is to get those team members reassigned back to the project. Uh, and in part, that's because we've got a lot of other, uh, work that's out there entering into design right now. Uh, there, there's a quite a bit of a backlog in, in projects up and coming. Um, but we understand. This is obviously a very, very tough decision for the district. And it's just, uh, it's an unfortunate situation. Just based on the economy. Uh, a lot of districts are, are going through the exact same, uh, concerns and comments. And working through the issues here. So, um, you know, I think historically too, to, to the point. That also that Stacy was, was making there is, a lot of districts see that, you know, in, in the past, over history here. Uh, while there may be a, a, a little bump in the pricing, historically, we've never seen the pricing go down. Uh, it may level off, it may be a little bit of a drop, but it generally will level, level off to a, a point where. Prices aren't gonna probably be a lot lower. So if you're expecting prices to drop up, you know, a hundred dollars a square foot or something. I, I would say that that's probably gonna be unlikely. Um, and just, you know, historically, we haven't seen those things happen. So, uh, again, we're here to help support the project. I know it's been a great team. District's been great to work with. Uh, and then we've got a great team with the construction with Summit, Mandy and Stacy. Stacy has been over backwards from OFCC side of this project to, uh, to help get you those funds. And, and that's a, that's a historical feat right there with OFCC. So, uh, it's a great opportunity. But I think we gotta get to a point where. So, it's a great opportunity, but I think we gotta get to a point where we have those GMP numbers and we're dealing with numbers and facts at that point instead of the fear is about where the market will or won't be. So, but I do know it's gonna take an investment from the district to get to that point as well.
Michael, you mentioned you've been on hold a couple of months. It was just brought to the board's attention in the, in the past meeting or stir, well, the past, the last meeting that we needed to move forward.
They've been on hold because schematic design, remember, they've said the last couple of months, we need to approve that.
I just wanted to make sure.
We haven't moved forward. It's not just notice that she just did, it's the schematic design. He's on hold until that gets approved.
Our, our original estimate that was done, one by Fanning Howie, one by Summit, was originally turned in in early February. So, we've been trying to reconcile and see where the market is and get all this and then, you know, okay, this is our final estimate. How much can I go for for the budget adjustment and those kinds of things? So, this project normally we flow from SD straight into DT, DD. So, you figure February, March, April, May, we're four months into this. Something Michael didn't bring up too is, you know, on their part, at least, I, I guess I'm gonna think of it as my, you know, I work on multiple projects at a time and I, I get away from something. They've been away from this design for three, four months. It takes time to reengage. You know, especially if you're on other projects and these guys will hear me come in and say, and I'll start talking about something, and you'll say Stacy that's Lancaster or Stacy that's Logan Almer. You know, my, my projects start running together with me when you're working on so many projects at a time. So, that's another factor is the longer their, the people are away from the design and that, you know, they gotta get reengaged back in. They gotta pull them back off to other projects. We don't want some to start putting their people on other projects and things like that. And, and so, you know, and, and their projects can't afford to, you know, he can't take a site superintendent and put it on another project for a while because those people's salaries are so high that. That other project can't afford two-site superintendents and that's when they start losing people. So, I, I, I think, you know, and I, and I was looking into your numbers. So, this project right now on my budget, we're, with your LFI's and our budget with the LFI's is fifty-nine million dollars. You guys are sitting in a situation where. In my twenty-one years, I've never seen a situation where you guys are paying for seven-point-nine million of your LFI's plus this additional, what is it?
Twenty-eight.
Four-point, your four, four-point-five million, whatever, four-point-two, four-point-three million dollars of a fifty-nine million dollars because your power plant people are paying for forty-nine percent of, or fifty-one percent of the original. Stacy's paying forty-nine percent, I mean, that's, that's a gift, of course.
Yeah, I agree. Our, our big concern as a board, we've had discussion, is beyond the project too. We have to be able to afford to, to maintain the school, to run the school.
And that's something I, I would like to address too. You know, think of it in, in aspect of you get this PK twelve and other districts, I mean, across the state, that's the big thing. You know, nowadays, a lot of the districts of your size are doing PK twelves rather than having five or six buildings. When, when you guys start doing your, get your PK twelve, you should have a lot of efficiencies, you know? Staffing, are you gonna need that as much staff? So, you need to start thinking now about those kinds of things that you're gonna be able to be much more efficient. You know, you're not gonna have to have as many staff maintaining these buildings because it's all on one site and everything's there. Or you can be able to share some teachers. Whereas, you know, before you had too many kids in a, a third grade class and you only had fifteen in there and you start merging these things together and you can be more efficient. Instead of needing six third-grade teachers, you only need four third-grade teachers. So, those are things, you know, your maintenance costs, look at what you're paying for these older buildings to maintain them. And you've got everything. Granted, you're gonna have air conditioning and it's gonna cost you more, but that's gonna be offset by not having six buildings that you're trying to maintain. You have leaky roofs and things like that. Just to, Andy can probably help me here, just to replace the, the roof on this high school that you have leaks and things like that. I mean, that cost in itself, if you have to do that in other buildings, at your four other buildings, you know, all of a sudden, you're gonna have that ten million dollars that you guys are paying out for this project. It's gonna be in those five buildings and all you're doing is putting lipstick on a pig, as everybody calls it.
I think.
So, I mean, those are the things that you gotta look at, that the efficiencies that eventually you're gonna have with this PK twelve, staff-wise, you know, maintenance-wise. Efficiencies on your busing.
Yeah.
Cause everything's coming to one location instead of, you know, five different locations. Those are the things that, can you save areas in there that's gonna help offset these costs that you might be incurring now?
And that's been the talk and plan as far as the board and the superintendent, treasurer. A, a, a big concern though is, you know, where, where you're talking about ten or eleven million dollars that we gotta come up, that can also between now and March, that can increase is the scary part. You know, we really don't know.
But you've already set aside, you were already planning on.
Yeah.
Seven and a half million of that.
But do you?
You're on LFI's.
A, a million-dollar question, do you, what if it's another five or six million come March? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it could, it could easily, right? I mean.
Nobody has a crystal ball.
No, I know, that's.
I think, I think our industry capable of lies if that was the case would, would no, would not exist at the time.
Okay.
I do. There's no, I mean, what project can handle that?
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
I'm not saying it can't happen.
Yeah.
I think, I think it stops at that point.
Well, that, that's, that's our biggest fear.
Yeah, that's, but again, you're still.
He gets paid, you get paid.
We get paid a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right, but two million, another two million.
Understood, you, you are, you are on the hook for design. I wanna make that.
Yeah, it's another two million that, that.
If you have design.
If the estimate comes back five or ten million too high.
Right.
Then, then.
But you have a design, I mean, I just, I, I wanna make sure, like, like stopping now, it just doesn't, to me, like, you're, you're stopping at thirty-three percent of the design being done at the very least. And by the way, this is not what was best for us. I mean, we, we don't make any money in pre-construction, we don't. So, I'm just, as an advisor saying, even if that were to happen, and again, we're no longer doing K-12 at that point because no district that we work with could handle it.
Okay.
You at least have a design that's done and then you can sit on that design and hardbid it, do whatever you want, rehire us, that would be great. We would understand walking, I would totally understand.
At that point.
I just wanna make sure at least you have the facts and tha, that's the fact. You would, you would have a design though.
Yeah.
Now, you have thirty-three percent of the design. I don't know how that would work if a year or two from now, you reengage Fanning or somebody else and that, that's, I've never seen that before, so I don't, I can't speak to that.
I think, the thing is, if, if we, if we don't move forward, it would be, there'd be no school being built for a long time. Where we're probably, realistically, that's where we're at.
One thing I didn't talk about were, are the implications of investors and the ability to finance down the road is credit.
It's gonna affect that, I understand that.
If, I mean, it's not a default on your credit in, but it's approximating that. You know, they, investors would feel like you did something different than what you represented at that.
I, I, we understand.
What their rating, like the Moody's rate, would I have to go through that process again? So, that's probably where it would hit us, right?
Yeah, there would be a lot of questions about that and how that.
And I, you know, this sounds on another topic, you know, I, I've done this for a long time and, and I would love it if, you know, we could get more consistent from the board at the core meetings. I understand you all work, get it? I work too. And I couldn't do it. But, you know, I haven't been on very many projects where I don't have more participation and I think that's where some of the confusion comes in maybe of you guys not quite understanding what's going on and what's said in these core meetings. And I think had more of the board, you know, been there before, I know Matt just started a month and a half ago, starting coming. And there's been a lot of design, and I'm, I can tell you, I have not been on a project that I can walk into and. Your people that's been on the core team, Candy, Molly, Shelley, Scott, and Jeff. I am impressed when I walk into a meeting and we start pulling over the design and those four have gone, four or five have gone through that design and they are asking detailed questions about the design. When Michael puts it up on the screen and goes things and makes suggestions, most districts do not have the ones that you guys have had that have been into this design and making suggestions and looking at what's right. And as far as, I mean, somebody was changing doors or can we move this room around here, this makes more sense. This is really too far for the, the principal to be going if there's an issue down the hallway. They've gotta go, I remember Shelley and them talking about, I gotta go clean across the school to get there, is there a way you can central? And the detail that these guys have gotten into, you had a, a great core team. But I would love to see more board participation consistent because you come in one meeting and then you're not the next and you miss too much. And then there's a lot of repeating and a lot of stuff missed or somebody doesn't understand something, somebody gets something out. And I understand it's hard.
Well, I don't mean to cut you short, but I'm frustrated with your response there. Just because boards of education, we depend on the core team to bring that information to us. I mean, we can have somebody present, but we still need, and I'm not saying they haven't, but a lot of times, you know, you depend on the people that are going to those meetings, that can attend the meetings to retro and, and to bring us up to date. And at points, we don't feel like we've been up to date.
And remember, we lost one key member that.
Well, we had, yeah, we had a.
That lost three brothers within a year and a half that.
And then there was some meetings Brad was gonna attend.
Brad's day off changed.
Day, his day off changed, so I'm just trying to let you know.
And I understand, like I said, I understand you guys all have meetings and I, I think Candy has been keeping people informed, everything is, maybe there's misunderstandings of things that's said and everything like that. But I can tell you, the core team that you have has been excellent as far as doing what's right for the district.
I think one part that I've been frustrated about with the core meetings is, is afterwards, is where information is coming from. Where, where the information that was expressed there, you know, again, not coming, i- it should come from a specific person, not, not from three or four side corridors, so to speak. And that's when misinformation gets put out there. So, you know, for me, it's important that I typically wait either on Candy or John to relay information that they, you know, to me is, is factual, not. It's all factual to a point, but maybe misunderstood along the way. So, that's what's important to me is where I get my information from when I can't be there, you know?
Well, a lot of the situation, you know, we do have sunshine laws and things we have to follow. And that is a difficult thing to work around. You know, we can, if, if Matt goes and shows up, then he's gotta try and relay all that information to all of us on the board. If Brad gets to make it, we did have a situation where Dennis, you know, resigned. I'm not making excuses. I just, I, I like to think.
I didn't mean it as a negative, honestly.
Well, I, I kinda took it that way, it just.
And I, I, and I'm not the best at explaining things. I'm just telling you how I've had other districts where they've had the, the consistency and stuff like that and, and it, it's, it's helped.
But I think by us showing what we did here tonight, to coming together and get all the information we could, there again, we had to depend on you guys. It cleared up a ton of things and I'm not gonna say, but we gotta have all five of us, we gotta have an official meeting, you know? And that's the difficult thing. I don't, I don't agree with the sunshine law, I don't like the sunshine law in a, in a roundabout way, I'm just being honest with you. It makes it very difficult, in my opinion, for a board of education to get information at yes.
To get everything.
Multi, and I, I know that none of us can solve that, but hopefully someday, the state of Ohio can understand. They need to sit on a board of education too and see where we're at with some of the laws they come up with. But anyways, I think.
Do you guys have any other questions about the notice of intent, understanding what the notice of intent is? That it's both parties saying, yes, we're moving forward and at that point, we're moving forward. And you guys, you know, the nice thing about, I can tell you, you know, a year ago, I had to go get a budget adjustment and we did the budget adjustment right then and the district had to come up with their proportional share right then. With the notice of intent, it's giving you, you're still committing to the funds and certifying that you'll have them, but you don't have to have them into the account until we're ready to do close to the GMP. And that is something I, I definitely have to make sure everybody understands. Once we get to the GMP, things will have to move quickly because it takes excellent time for us to get the documents ready. Once we get the numbers in, I gotta redo my budgets, I've gotta take it to our commission, they've got to approve the budget adjustment, then it has to go to the controlling board. And you may have to have some special board meetings in there because we have to hit those deadlines because if his subcontractors are only gonna hold nowadays, I've had them where they're holding them two weeks. I've had them where they're holding them five days, whereas normally you could get them thirty to sixty days. We've got to move forward and make those decisions quickly once we get to GMP. And, and that's unfortunate on everybody because everybody's gonna be, you know, busting their butts to get everything together.
I understand that.
So, do you guys understand what she's saying? So, by March.
By, probably February.
February, March, I'm gonna have to have all the money in the account. So, even if there's other things in the works that's gonna take another year or two to complete.
We have to be.
I have to have that money in the account, so we will dip, we will have to dip into general fund unless something happens and still go with our process over the next couple of years of getting money back. Yeah, I, I mean, as long as everyone's on the same page and understand what we're doing.
And you start planning for things that you have to plan for, you know?
But luckily, we do have, I, because I, that was the first question I asked, I'm glad we have until March to do as much as we can now instead of putting all of it in today.
Right.
Which is, which is nice. And that allows us to move forward with the design. But again, then if you guys would back out then, you know, and our, our number is, is where we say we're at the fifty-nine million dollars and then you guys would back out then, then you guys are gonna be on the hook for everything, more than likely for what we've done up to now.
Yeah.
You know, because we've all agreed, we're putting ours in, but we're just given the time to do it because we have enough in the funds to cover everything now. Once we sign a GMP, we have to be able to certify the funds from the state and the local.
Please, please understand that we don't wanna back out, you know, we, we wanna build this.
I use wrong terms sometimes.
Please understand, we don't wanna back out, but we also gonna be able to afford it.
Yes.
And still pay everybody because there's a school district right down the street here that built, brand new building that is in big trouble. Right down the street, built a brand new building. And they're not having much luck. Matter of fact, they just asked for a levy, didn't they?
I think.
I just, I, you guys are in a great situation and I, I hope for your kids' sake and you guys' sake and the state's sake and everybody's sake, contractors, the architect, we can continue to move forward. I think it's the best thing for us to do. I completely understand the financial scare in it and your guys' position, but it's not something that comes about all the time. And I apologize if I offended you by.
You didn't offend me, I'm just, I, I'm gonna stick up for my board, you know, it's, it's.
Not just trying to show you what I see.
We spend a lot of time, you know, the, the time that.
It's pretty much our own.
So, I, I gotta defend our board, so, no, you didn't offend me, I just wanted to make sure.
But you do, you, I, I, I can't give enough praise for, you know, the four or five that, that have been consistent.
And we agree with that, we do.
They have really put their heart and souls into it. I'm gonna really miss Molly because, you know.
But I hope you understand what I was getting at is, so you have maybe one person from the board that's gotta come back and, and not send at a meeting like this all the time and relay it to the other four. And, you know, we're, we're not all builders, we're not all, you know.
And it's confusing.
Yeah, and so, tonight was very helpful to me and I think we can all agree, and I know it was, it was a situation that was a pain, you know, for you guys to do it. But really, I've got a ton of answers tonight and it's just sometimes, like I said, we have to do it that way so we're all clear. I want everybody to be on the same page before we make a serious vote like this, so thank you. And I didn't mean, you didn't offend me, I just, I'm gonna stick up for our board.
I understand, I.
Cause we all work hard, I know everybody in here. Listen, none of us would be here if we didn't have nobody, you know, if we didn't have the best intentions for this district, you know? It's one of those things that, that's what it's all about. So, with that being said, if you guys are comfortable, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read special item one. Approved program of requirements, schematic design stage submissions, the corresponding LFI memorandum of understanding and authorizing design development phase services. Services for new PK twelve project as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Darren.
Better be right.
Hey, he looked at you guys all day. And I like.
Glad you looked at her.
Yeah, thanks for looking at her.
Okay, roll call, please.
Um, Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward. Special item two. Approving the resolution, resolution acknowledging the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's. First notice of intent to amend the project agreement and acknowledging the obligation to contribute to school districts proportional share of. Actual cost overruns in certain circum- circumstances as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Hold on, Humphrey.
I'll be honest, guys, I've never heard the president second, I I would, but I did, you know, Dennis never did, and I'm still learning. Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
I just wanna say one thing, um, I appreciate what Candy's done, the stuff she put together, getting deep guys here and Mike and Andy and and uh.
Stacy.
Patrick and and the state here for us, um, I think she's done a wonderful job over the Memorial Day weekend, getting the information we need. Getting the people here to uh make us feel better about it since Thursday.
Yeah, and we wanna thank you, we know that this is your time that you're here on, and and that's everybody.
Yeah, Michael's on vacation this week, so I truly appreciate that.
Tom's on vacation too, vacation too.
Yes, yeah, Tom's downtown too.
With that being said, I should have mentioned this earlier, but I wanna, I wanna uh.
Thank you guys.
Have the detras in our thoughts and prayers, uh, I I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but. Uh, they're going through a real hard time and Devin couldn't be here, he had a nice conversation with me this morning and. So you guys know, he fully uh supported the board and the decision. Benny, Mr. Gold, had him, you know, that he, that we could make the right decision and and go from there, so. I wanna, I wanna throw that out there, uh, with that being said, I guess, do I have a motion to adjourn? Those seconds and motions come fast.
They're much faster and they worked on this.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes. And our next core meeting is June thirty.